We'll call this June 20, 2024 Reno County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Staff, will you call the roll?
Shortfeger.
Okay.
Strahan.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gerson.
Here. Welcome, everyone. Had some nice rains over the weekend, so that's in the first part of the week. That's awfully nice. I hope everyone has had a good harvest and wrapped things up and counting their tallies. We have, hopefully trust everyone has received the packets and had a chance to review them. And within there, it's kind of special this week, this month, we have two separate minutes that we, for review. One is from the November 9 meeting, and that, we'll start with that. Chair will entertain a motion on the November 9 meeting.
When we adopt the further minutes as presented.
Thank you. They've moved to second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of approving the November 9, 2023 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. November 9 minutes are approved. Next set of minutes are from last month, May 16, 2024. Chair will entertain a motion on those minutes.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
They've moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor to approve May 16, 2024 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay. We're out into business.
The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a conditional use permit public hearing as a quasi judicial function. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner, the planning commission will follow a fact finding procedure which is outlined in the handout in its chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, the public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest or if the planning commission failed to follow an interested party, allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall be, shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the planning commission recommendation. The planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing along with the report and recommendations of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information that will, that includes the record of proceeding provided to the planning commission before and during the public hearing. If the planning commission takes, makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to, wishes to require the county commissioners decide this case by a super majority vote may file a protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of the Reno County Clerk, 125 West First Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, which, within 14 days following the decision by the planning commission. This form is on the Reno County website, Planning Department webpage. I'll now formally open the, the public hearing regarding case number 2024-07, the request by S&amp;J McMaster Properties LLC for a conditional use permit to establish a private dining hall on land zone AG Agricultural District. The property is located at 19807 South Cape 14 Highway. Have any of the planning commissioners had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the planning commissioners members have any conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
Okay. Stephen McMaster, current address 1818 East 24th, Hutchinson, Kansas. What we're requesting is to utilize a portion of a building that we are currently in process of building, which we got the permit to build back in November of last year. This portion of the building will have the seating capacity for about 100, but we are going to restrict our dining hall to a maximum number of 60 people. This dining hall will be a private dining hall, only open two times a month maximum, and only for about eight months out of the year. We will be serving fine dining meals that are out of the norm for Hutchinson and the Will open typically on Thursday evenings. We will, we are planning on having a bar to serve alcohol, but we are not a bar, by no means. We're only providing alcohol to enhance the food's flavor, and that's it. We'll have 30 parking spaces, which meets the county's requirements for parking spots for the 60-person limit that we are setting on the facility. Any questions?
Your hours of operation, you say you'll be open what, one night just Thursday? Is that the only night you're going to be open?
It'll be Thursday evenings we'll open. The doors will probably open at 5:30, and we should be done by 9.
This is basically just one day, twice a month is what you're looking at?
Yes, and it isn't, you come and order. We tell you, this is the five course meal we're serving that evening. If you want to eat it, come. You get your membership when you pay your deposit, when you make your reservation for that evening.
What, what is the type of clientele you're expecting to?
So, the entire intent behind this is to give another option for Reno County to have, anyone can come to it. We're not shooting for a specific type of clientele. We're trying to open up the opportunity for everyone to be able to experience fine dining experience without having to have a $2,000 a month, $2,000 a month membership somewhere. So, we're just trying to make it so any of you could take your spouse out on a Thursday evening and have a good meal.
So, basically, each, each time you're open twice a month, then people can call in, make a reservation or whatever, they don't have slots.
So, you can go in there just with you and your spouse if you want to. Correct.
Do that, okay. Right. So, you're going to be open whether you have four people or 60 people.
Correct.
There must be a pretty elaborate kitchen to prepare a fine dining meal. That's already included in the building or will be included with?
It is currently in process of being built now. Does that answer your question? So, it's just a standard kitchen you would get at any restaurant. Fine dining doesn't mean super fancy equipment. It just means really good food, done well.
Do you have past experience in preparing food and managing?
So, my wife and I also own a barbecue company as well, that we do some catering on the side. I was a chef or a cook at Airport Steakhouse many years ago. We have our own line of rubs. My wife has been a cook for over 20 years, so, yeah, we, and many other ventures that we have that, yeah, we, we've got quite a bit of experience in managing that type of atmosphere.
How did you zero in on Thursday night?
Because it's not Wednesday, and it's not Friday, and it's definitely not Saturday. So, Thursday night, if you really look at the numbers, Thursday night is when most people, middle aged or so, want to take their wife out for a date night. And the reason why is there's typically no sports or less sports on a Thursday. It's not as busy on a Saturday. I know I don't personally like going out on a Friday or Saturday because there's just too many people. And that's the other good thing about this, is it's going to be very limited, small, nice atmosphere, polite service, quiet. You're not going into somewhere where the radio is cranked up so loud you can't even hear yourself think, so. And it's not going to be the cookie cutter meals, right? You can pretty much go anywhere in town and get the same thing at various different restaurants, and we're opening up the opportunity to get other things.
The atmosphere will be air conditioned, so it can?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This body doesn't work without air conditioning.
Do you plan to employ other people to help serve it and fix it?
Yes. So, we'll, we'll hire, it will depend on the number of people we get that evening, correct? So, if we have 60 people, we'll typically have five white staff, which will be contract employees. And then, my wife and I will do the cooking, and we'll have one to two other contract employees in the kitchens at that time. Typically, a sous chef and a dishwasher. Because serving 60 people isn't that hard.
What's the story on the location?
It showed up, and it was for sale.
Okay.
And it's on two paved roads. That's, honestly, that's the story of the location.
That makes sense. Yeah, it's because it's, there aren't a lot of other high-end restaurant opportunities on southern end of Cape 14.
No. Matter of fact, the, one of the good things about, to me, is a draw, is even when you go for the, 14 Highway is not a busy highway. Bueller Haven Road is busier than Cape 14 Highway, if you really look at the numbers. So, Cape 14 Highway is perfect for someone to come out, 10-minute drive outside of Hutch, 10, 15-minute drive outside of Hutch. You come in, you come in, park, come into a nice, quiet facility, not a lot of racket. You don't have all the honking, all the noise of town. You're not going to get all the extra added things you get when you do something in town. It's going to be nice and peaceful.
If you find yourself wildly successful, you never see every Thursday or Thursday and some other day?
No. You want to know why?
Sure.
It's a real pain to get lobster flown in from Maine. It's a pain to get salmon flown in from Alaska. It's challenging to get local elk butchered. It's challenging to get local bison butchered. We're going to serve dishes like pheasant under glass. All these things have a timeframe for them, right? And to organize and orchestrate that takes a lot of time and a lot of advertising time. So, as soon as we know exactly when our soft open is, which is currently planned for the end, late October, we, at that point, we have to have every meal planned out for six months. And we have to start advertising those as soon as we know we're opening. Because people are going to have the oppo, we're going to have to say, this is the incomplete meal for all these things, because you either come and eat this or you don't come, right? We're not going to opt, like, I think our, our soft opening meal, my wife knows better than I do, but it's, it's a kicked up file mignon. Basically. Which, that meal isn't so bad, but it's five courses, and when you come, you're not going to get to order chicken, right? It's going to be file mignon, and it's going to be file mignon medium rare. It's not going to be file mignon any way you want it. It's going to be, this is what it is. So, we are serving you a experience more than we're serving you a meal. Or as much as we're serving you a meal. It's a lot of work to put some, a five course meal together to be able to do it perfectly.
You mentioned the term membership. When you make your reservation and put down your money, then you are now a member? Help me understand how that all works.
So, as soon as you pay your deposit for the evening, and that's how you reserve your seedings, you become a member for the evening. I don't know any other way to describe it. It has to be a private dining facility.
You're doing that because of the liquor aspect or what?
It's because of a whole bunch of aspects. We'll just leave it there.
Okay.
We definitely do not want people thinking that you're going to get to show up and knock on the door, we're going to open up, you're going to get to sit down at a bar and drink all night. That's not happening. Any other questions?
What are your intentions for the living area and portion of that?
To live in it.
That's going to be your, your residence. Any other questions for us?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. McMaster, you discussed with KDA and KDHT your proposal about, are you requiring any kind of state permits to do what you want to do out there?
I've already got all my permits filed with them. As soon as the building's built, they'll come and inspect. We're scheduled, I've talked to three or four of them, I've talked to liquor license. We will be filing for the liquor license as soon as the building's built. Just because there's no reason for me to pay for something I'm not using for four or five months, they'll come in out and inspect, because they can't even inspect anything until I'm built. And so, after that inspection is done, so we've, just like with you, we talked to you before we even bought the property, and we had everything lined out. We got our permits back in November of last year. So, we've been communicating with those facilities as well.
Those state facilities?
Yes.
Good. That's good to hear. That's it.
Any other further questions for that?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Now, we'll hear from staff.
Mark Vianci, county planner. Kind of follow up on my question, Board. I think that's why there's some limitations on how many people he can serve and how many times he can serve people, because there are limitations with state permits where you need to be a public, you know, water operator, you've got other issues with KDA. If you stay under those requirements, then he can do it at the level that he wants to do without having to have added expenses into his operation right there. Going above, like Mr. Strahan said, you know, you anticipate, you know, going every, every week, you know, every month, it's certainly a possibility, but then that's more state permits and more, more expense that, you know, he may not be willing to do, you know, right now anyway. So, just want to kind of finish that thought on my question. As you heard, a good presentation by Mr. McMaster. We are actually located, you know, on the south part of the county on Cape 14 Highway and, and Parallel Road, and yes, Mr. McMaster has been working with, with me and the environmental section on, on this project here for several months before he actually made, made the application here. He did receive a permit from me to construct a residential garage and the residential house. Part of that, that structure is proposed to be converted into this private dining hall, but the structure that I issued a permit for is actually for the residential house. If he gets the ultimate approval from the county commissioners, then he would be able to legally convert that back portion of his house into the private dining hall. Picture of the site, this is almost exactly like the, the map that I have. You have this in, in your packet. That's just showing the, the general location of all, all of his buildings right here. So, you can see it's kind of in the northern part of his, his parcel there. It's about 70, 70 acres inside. Here is his site plan that's going to kind of show the, the dining hall area slash house, his garage. He's got a brooding house in there, and then he's got a proposed location of, of his lagoon and, and well that's out there. I say, everything has currently been permitted as a, as a residential structure. If he gets the approval from the county commissioners, then the dining hall portion of his house can be legally converted into that private dining hall experience like you described here. This is showing his parking, parking area next to the building here. Regulations will require 30 parking, excuse me, regulations require 20. He is providing 30 parking spaces, so that is in conformance with our requirements. Regulations also will require that he, he pave the driveway and the parking area, as you see in, in the report, he is requesting a waiver from that requirement. Regulations also require that he have one loading space installed for the property for deliveries. He's again, in his, his write-up, he's stating that, you know, he does not need to have a big loading space for, for big delivery trucks. Everything will be by UPS or, or other type of vehicle, so he is requesting a waiver from, from that requirement as well. Last part of my report really just kind of discusses the golden factor that you need to use to review this case. As you can see, I'm not going to go over, I don't think, all the factors here. Some of the ones that I had in my report were, you know, in his favor. The way some of the other ones were written, it does not prove to be in his, his favor, but when you take a look at all of the factors collectively and you, you analyze the request, I believe that he meets the majority of those factors. And so, staff has recommended approval of this request based on the nine factors that you see listed in my report, and I attached six conditions of approval. The first one, that the parcel shall be developed according to the approved site plan dated March 29. Parking of customer vehicles permitted only in the designated area. The parking area shall be constructed of rock as indicated in the plan of operation or another approved surface by the Public Works Director. Any state approved licenses shall be submitted prior to operating the private dining hall, and so that's where I was inquiring about, has he been in contact with the state? So, what this is, is if he requires some type of inspection or approval from the Kansas Department of Ag, then I would like to have a copy of that for my records. If something is required by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, then I'd like to have a copy of that, sign off or permit that says that he is legally able to operate the, the dining hall according to the state. The fifth, fifth condition, shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. That really kind of covers the county in the sense that if he's out of compliance with the state regulations, then we could theoretically revoke the, the conditional use permit if, if it comes to something like that, so. And that's what the sixth condition was. Few, few photos that I have left out here, this is his site plan of the interior of the building, showing the living space of the house, but also the, the dining hall Pictures of the area, there's not a lot of, of housing, as I think Mr. Schaefer knows, it's kind of an isolated area. Not a very good picture from, from Google Earth, but that is the 70-acre parcel that he, he owns. As you can see, it's pretty much vacant land at the time that the picture was taken. I say, I think in my report, I noted there was maybe a couple of houses generally in that area, but they were still pretty far away. This is looking east across, 14 Highway across from, from the driveway. And that is looking north from Parallel Road, so on the south side of his parcel, looking due north from there, just kind of giving you an idea of what the, what the land looks like. I'd say not, not a lot of housing, not a lot of other buildings out in, in that portion of the county, so. With that, I stand for questions by the board.
Darcy's been involved with, in conversation?
Yes. Yep. He's been working with her on installation of the wastewater system and, and the well installation. Yes.
You answered my other question about water treatment. Like, we had, we had a similar facility south of, south of here that had an application and was requiring a waste, a water treatment, and a water treatment operator and all that, all that went along with it. And that was one of my questions, but I think you answered that.
Yeah, for those of you on the board, a few years ago, a gentleman applied to operate a restaurant, and state restrictions kind of got in the way of his ultimate goal of that. He was still able to get approval and stay under the state requirements of, of a public water operator. So, that, that request was, was approved. And that's part of the restriction, that it's pretty expensive to hire a, a water operator to maintain all that. But, yeah, we were having, that discussions with Mr. McMaster as well.
Do you know which fire district this would be in?
I do not off the top of my head.
I know it's kind of out that, there's kind of one out that way, so I just.
I was, I was, if I had a guess, I would say.
It looks like it's Fire Mr. A with the telephone.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the A, I was trying to remember.
Okay, yeah, I missed that.
Part of my map, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case? I don't see anyone jumping up. So, do you have any other statements you'd like to make in support?
Let's go.
Okay, got you. No, no worries. Does staff have any other additional comments?
I have no further comments, Mr. Chair.
Does this board have any other, other questions for, for the applicant or staff? Okay, I'll now deem the public hearing closed. Acceptance or denial of, of this conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found in the audience chairs. This is the time the planning commission can discuss this case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any discussion on this case? Be quiet.
There'd be a no then.
There would be a no. Here, let's stop studying.
No, eyes just look.
Nope, that's fine.
It's not.
That's fine. If there isn't any other discussion, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the case number 2024-07, the request by S&amp;J McMaster Properties LLC requesting conditional use permit from Reno County zoning regulations to establish a private dining hall on a parcel of land zoned AG Agricultural District be approved based on the nine factors and six conditions of approval listed in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing. I further move to grant a waiver from the off street loading requirement and the permanent paving requirement.
Second.
They've moved to second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, staff, please call a roll.
Shortfeger.
Yes.
Strahan.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Gerson.
Yes. Motion carries. Go. Run with the wind.
I've got plenty to do, trust me.
Thank you very much. Next item of business, had to be on our, on our agenda, the discussion on the proposed text amendment for Article 1511, paragraph 8, prohibited uses, which proposes to prohibit a commercial solar energy system in the zoned area of the county. Staff, do you have some background for us?
Sure, Board. As you recall, last month, we approved the draft private solar regulations, and then staff here decided that we. staff here decided that we want to do a public hearing for the private solar and also the commercial solar, the same public hearing. And so before you tonight is the proposed text amendment to prohibit commercial solar farms in the current zoned area of the county or the fully zoned area of the county. This was at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, this is what they would like to see us have a public hearing on. And so before you is the text amendments actually on the back page of that Article 15111. Article 15111 discusses currently seven types of land uses that are prohibited, you know, in some various forms in the zoned area of the county. And so you recall, a few years ago, we prohibited commercial wind farms in the zoned area of the county, and so that is number seven under that article there. And so the language that we are proposing here to prohibit commercial solar in the zoned area of the county is pretty much the same type of language that we use to prohibit commercial wind. Just to give you a little bit of an explanation here, Article 1-103 talks about the jurisdictional boundary of the zoning regulations. So that's what that's in reference to. Now, to distinguish the, what I call the fully zoned area of the county versus the western part of the county that's only zoned for commercial wind or our C-Wex zoning district, the two resolutions that you see referenced here, the first one, 2016-09, is the original zoning resolution here for the majority of the eastern part of the county. The other resolution, 2020-10, is the pocket of the county that was currently unzoned back in that timeframe. If you recall, there was east of Chiny Lake here, there was a pocket of area that was unzoned in amongst the fully zoned area of the county. So that resolution is the resolution that actually zoned that area of the county fully and to be in compliance with the rest of the surrounding area. And so we had to put that in there to make a distinction between that area of the county being zoned and then the western part of the county, which is under a different, excuse me, resolution. And so that's why we did that. And then lastly, the sentence under that just kind of talks about what is a commercial solar energy system, and that definition is found under the recently adopted limited-scale solar regulations. And so people are wondering, what is a commercial solar farm? They would reference that definition, and then if this passes as proposed, then anything that meets that definition would be prohibited. So, that's pretty much the simple way to go about prohibiting it at the direction of the county commissioners now. It still takes a public hearing, it still takes comments from the public, you know, and you have to go through and listen and then make a determination whether we should prohibit that or not. You still have that option before you. You know, the direction of the county commissioners was to go through the public hearing process to prohibit, but you can certainly bring forth a different recommendation based on testimony that you would hear at a future public hearing, so.
Question mark.
Yes.
But the information you sent us, we have this page here out of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Roll over to that.
So, good question, that was gonna be my second point, so you jumped me, but you're fine. I'm glad you're on the ball. So I included the page in the comprehensive plan for your review to make sure that you are in agreement that the comprehensive plan would also support the prohibition of commercial solar rays. Usually the way it works is you adopt a comprehensive plan, and then your zoning regulations match what the comprehensive plan says, because the zoning regulations intent is to implement the goals of the comprehensive plan. So I provided, what we did, and you recall, that we did some changes to the comprehensive plan when we prohibited commercial wind. And I just provided that for the board's information to make sure you're still in current with, in agreement with that that language also would allow us to go ahead and prohibit commercial solar as well.
You're saying this, this deal that deals with the wind energy conversion systems should equally apply to solar without any changes?
That is, that is my, you know, suggestion to you. Does, yeah. It does reference solar in that second paragraph.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, it does. Second, last sentence in the second paragraph.
Okay.
Yep. So that was just my way of doing my due diligence to make sure that this board is still in agreement that the comprehensive plan gives us the ability to possibly prohibit commercial solar. If you don't think it does, then we're going to have to do a text amendment or so to the comprehensive plan as well. But I believe that that language does, but it's your job to concur with that reasoning.
So, Mark, I've got a question. This text amendment here just applies to the current zoned area, but there's been discussion with the county commission regarding expanding zoning to the entire county. So what happens if that scenario happens independent of this process?
If they expand the zoning, then if this would go through, and then these regulations would then apply out west, then commercial solar would be prohibited automatically in the western part of the county, and so.
So we could be banning commercial solar on a part of the county that up till now really hasn't had any input or really interest in this process, is that right?
Yeah, Mark, the commissioner's supposedly out holding meetings with the people out of the county on zoned areas of the county.
We'll be having three town hall meetings, and we're hoping to have those in July. And so to answer your question, if you banned commercial solar in a zoned area, then that just affects the zoned area now, but if you fully zoned that, then you would be.
So they might be getting a solar ban and maybe not realize it.
Potentially. You gotta, you gotta also realize that, that the resolution for that commercial wind district is not included in here, so we would actually have to do like probably another text amendment to be able to include that commercial wind district. Because that's why we have that distinction. Usually, if you're fully zoned, you're just going to say, we're going to ban it, and that's it, you don't have to reference resolutions. But because we're partially zoned and partially, you know, fully zoned here, now we have to reference, what is this ban entail, what area of the county? Well, these two resolutions define the area where we're banning it, and so.
Right, for now though, but that could be changing, and has that been communicated to that part of the county?
It would have to have another public hearing though to actually probably ban it in the western part, because that's going to be under a different resolution.
As we stand today.
Right, today, but if we, but if, after these town hall meetings, the commissioners say, hey, we've got support to zone the whole county, and that would make our whole zoning regulation, if that would go through its process and it would pass and it would all take place, then all of our, I think what Alan is asking, is all of our zoning regulations as they are written today for the zone portion will then apply for the total county corner to corner, north, south, east to west, correct?
The regulations as they're written would apply corner to corner, but if you look at the prohibition section, it only references those two resolutions, which is just the eastern part of the county.
So, so as this text amendment is, it still wouldn't include the currently.
Gotcha.
Okay. Because I was, yeah, because like I've, you know, I've heard both sides out in that, but I don't think, you know, a lot of this discussion has been people in the.
So, not only, not only do these resolutions, the 2016-09, 2020-10, identify the zoned areas, but that really kind of keeps it in that area even if total zoning comes into place corner to corner.
Because you gotta, yeah, because you gotta, I know it's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think so, I'm glad you helped.
I'm trying to understand it too, but your question is helping me too.
It's really confusing because we're, we got one zoning district out in the western two-thirds, we got multiple zoning districts, you know, you can think of it as being unzoned and stuff, but if the regulations are adopted for out in the western part of the county, we're going to have to develop a zoning map. We're going to have to zone properties ag and residential instead of the commercial wind zoning, zoning district. And so when we do that, we're going to have to adopt another resolution. So it's going to be Resolution 2024-25, for example, okay? So that'll get, that resolution's going to apply to the western part of the county. Well, if this is adopted as is, Resolution 2024-25, for lack of a better number.
It doesn't matter what we do, whether it becomes, whether the whole county becomes zoned or not, it is not only this, this applies to the, to the triangle that we're zoned now.
If they wanted to apply, then it's another text amendment to amend.
No, wait here to add that.
So then if we take this out and make it apply to the whole county, there'd be another text amendment, another public hearing.
Another public hearing.
And another opportunity for those folks to be able to provide their input.
That's making sense now.
Okay.
Yeah, because the zoning is referencing a resolution. You know, if we were, if we were completely zoned, then you wouldn't see these resolutions, you might see one resolution reference for so, but you know, we have these multiple resolutions because we piecemeal the zoning over the years here. And so, yeah, we're not talking about anything out west right now, and whatever happens out west, we'll have to look at these, these text amendments again and adjust accordingly to fit that area if they decide to fully zone, or if they even decide to add commercial solar to the commercial wind zoning district. You know, at that point in time, it's getting really complicated and stuff, you know, we would, we'd probably amend the name of that zoning district, because, you know, commercial wind would no longer fit, but, yeah, I mean.
I think Alan and I are probably asking the same question.
I think so, yeah.
We don't want any unintended consequences coming, tagging along without communication.
So whatever's going to happen out west in the future's going to require a public hearing.
So.
That's separate from this. That's probably the simplest.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, yeah, I am too. I feel, I was concerned about it coming in today, but I feel bad about it.
No, because, yeah, because we're not, because we're talking about two different, two different types of zone.
Yeah, there's like two, we have like some fairly big changes, and, but they're operating separate, at some point they may, yeah.
We're not making, we're not making any kind of decision for the people out west, you know, with this, we're just talking about the eastern third of the county.
Cool.
So.
Can you repeat what you said about the comprehensive plan? I think I missed one real quick.
So typically you, you develop a comprehensive plan for land use development first. You decide what land uses are important, what do you want to regulate, what you don't want to regulate. After you adopt the comprehensive plan, then you usually write your zoning regulations, because your zoning regulations help implement the goals that are inside your comprehensive plan. Well, Reno County, we did it the opposite way. We adopted the zoning regulations first in 2016, and then went back and adopted a comprehensive plan in 2018. And so it was just the opposite. Usually you do your plan, and then your regulations you develop help you implement the goals of your plan. And so my purpose and sending this to you is to make sure that you read the language in it, to make sure that the language in the comprehensive plan will match what is being proposed right now, and that's the prohibition of commercial solar. And we did that with commercial wind several years ago, you may recall.
So you've got, in my mind, there's two sentences in that second paragraph that you shared with us. There's a sentence about mid-paragraph that states prohibition may be necessary to protect the development of the future urban areas and existing for, and existing and future suburban area bases, particularly eastern Reno County. Then the last sentence, the same general policies regarding any potential commercial solar energy systems, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So that, that to me can, I mean, that, that pretty much pulls it all together, that I don't think we need to do anything with a comprehensive plan in my mind.
Question though. Well, okay, we've got two zoned parcels for the different regulations, right? You know, piecemealing this, we're going to have more and more of those things if this ever expands. Can't those be consolidated? Just have one, one resolution saying this is the zoned area?
Well, that's, that's what they're attempting here in their town hall meeting.
Well, I mean, that. Right now, no, because we, because that was still an unzoned area, I mean, that's why it's so.
Well, no, I understand.
It's complicated.
I'm trying to say to somehow simplify the whole process that instead of having, you know, we've got two now, and if they do this, then we've got three different areas. So every time you do anything, you've got to reference all three areas. Can't we, is there any way to consolidate all that into just one jurisdictional area?
Yes.
So we don't have to reference all these little piecemeal pieces?
The way to do it is to review the zoning map that's in the current eastern third of the county and make some wholesale changes to people's zoning on their property. And then if you do that, then yeah, you're going to be adopting a brand-new zoning map, you know, say county-wide. Then when you do that, then yeah, then it'll be consolidated under one, one resolution. But that's really the only way to do it.
So if the county-wide comes in and it becomes 2025 dot one, then that's the only resolution you have to, you have to, you have to note.
If we decide to.
If you decide to go, if, if county-wide does.
If you decide to look at the zoning in the eastern part of the county, because, you know, there's, there's parcels out there that are legal non-conforming, meaning that, you know, it may be zoned R1, but it's only an acre parcel, so that's a legal non-conforming parcel. If we decide to take a look at those and make that parcel a conforming parcel, then that would take another public hearing and another adoption. And then at that point in time, if they do county-wide, then we can bring it all under one resolution. And then we'd have to be amending that again, because these two resolutions would.
You might do that after I'm off the board. That would be another contentious.
You're off the board and I'm off.
So what are our action item possibilities tonight?
So right now, I'm asking this board, is this language acceptable to you? And if it is, great. And then the next part, which is letter C, is for us to discuss, when do you want to have a public hearing date for these, these text amendments?
So, so do you need just a consensus, or do you, do you want to voice vote on whether we're good with this?
Well, you did, you did a motion last month, and so, you know, I was, you know, it doesn't say, you know, action, but I think, you know, if this board feels like it's necessary to give me a motion, I think you can do, you can do that like you did last month on that. I didn't put it as an action item, but I don't think it hurts.
You know, I think we at least have it as a record when we got them there, I think that'd be the right way to go.
And so there's a public hearing whether we, well, what happens if we vote yes and what happens if we vote no?
On?
On this, I guess number eight is what they.
On the text amendment or so?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, with the text amendment, I mean, if you're concerned about like prohibiting it, I think the time to, to, you know, say be against that would be at the public hearing. This is just, this is something that's being directed to us and to the planning commission by the commissioners, and so this is what they want to see. And so then the time to voice opposition or concern, if you would have that, would be at the public hearing when this comes before you for a vote on whether we should adopt this or not.
All we're doing is approving how this reads tonight.
Right, yeah, really all, yeah, I think that's probably a better way to say.
We can approve, move forward with the hearing, then get the input on that, then make a possible decision on approving this text amendment.
You may not agree or so with that direction, but the time to do that would be at the public hearing. This is just the language, all you're really considering right now is the language as it's written and as directed by commissioners.
That makes sense, kinda.
Well, it makes sense, but I don't necessarily think I have to agree with it. I don't have a public hearing, there'd be a public hearing either way.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I think we'll have opportunity to hear opinions on it and to voice our own.
Yep.
At the public hearing.
This is, this is just, we're mainly, we're mainly wanting to give a draft that we can get public comment on. And then we can gather pros and cons via the public hearing based upon this draft of this text, whether or not it should say that, whether we should be, whether it should even be there, or whether we should change how it's worded or so on, or accept it as how it's written. And that'll be at, after the, after we close the public hearing, we can discern after their input what takes place. after their input what takes place. And we just need to, what, what we're deciding tonight is just getting some ink on the paper that will, that will prompt conversation in the public hearing. It doesn't mean that we're, this is, we're not, this isn't our final decision that this is going to, this is going to come to pass. We're just trying to get a text amendment placed so we can have a hearing.
Are we deciding a date as well for the public hearing?
So you, you know, at the next public hearing that we would have on that, then you would have the opportunity to say you disagree with this and state your opinions why for, for the record, so the commissioners would be able to, to review that. This is mainly just the language at their direction, what they wanted this board to consider. That doesn't mean that you have to agree with that ultimately.
I understand that, but I, I could write it that says, applications for conditional use permit shall be considered and conditional use permits shall be issued. You'll make it in the positive instead of the negative.
Although right now, the, right now, the direction was to prohibit commercial solar in the zoned area.
Yeah, I know, but if we, if I don't agree with that, what, and if by chance the majority of this board would not agree with it, what happens? What does the county commission do? Can they do whatever they want to do or?
Got a question.
Well, so if you make a recommendation that they don't agree with, then with a supermajority vote, they can not agree, they can not agree with you, but it takes that.
They would, you would, you'd still have to conduct a public hearing. And so, like you said, I mean, this is the language that they want. So we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to listen to a lot of public input. And if the majority of this board doesn't agree with the prohibition of commercial solar, then after that, close of that public hearing, the majority of this board can recommend denial of this text amendment here. And then that recommendation goes to the commissioners like anything else. And then at that point.
Have the supermajority.
Then they would have to have a supermajority to, to overturn your, to overturn your recommendation of denial. I mean, you know.
And this proposed text amendment applies currently, would only apply to the zoned areas of the county. Does exist the same.
And, and really at this point in time, we just need some sort of, something so that we can set a hearing and we can get feedback.
Right.
And this is the something that we've been provided as guidance by the county commission.
So you're going to provide this so that you can have a public hearing? So you'll listen to all the public and to, to make your mind or help you make up your mind to close the public hearing, then you'll have all your discussion and then you'll send that recommendation to the board of county commissioners. That's all this is. So this is so you're allowed, so this is so you can have a public hearing, which is required, listen to the public and then discussion, make your decision. And send it to the board of county commissioners. Your recommendation.
That help, Garth, a little bit or?
A little bit, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the proposed, the wording of the proposed text amendment to create Article fifteen one eleven eight prohibited uses, which proposes to prohibit commercial solar energy systems in the zoned area of the county and adopt that for a public, future public hearing. Or you want to word that?
Do we need a date with that motion?
No, not for the public hearing. We'd ask, yeah. Motion was just to accept the language as written, I believe, in a nutshell.
Exactly.
Been a motion, is there a second? Been moved in second, is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I feel a little, a little bit like a hostage, sending this message to the public that this body has made a decision. Granted, there's still a public hearing to come, but we have now made a motion to approve this language. And, you know, the public hearing is going to be the public hearing and we don't know, we don't know how many people will show up, how many will speak for or against. And that doesn't guarantee a decision in the end anyway. But I, I just feel it's the wrong message to send ahead of a public hearing. You know, if you really want honest input, you, the question in my mind should be, should Reno County ban commercial solar in the zoned area of the county? Not, no, we are going to ban it. So it seems framed up in a negative instead of a neutral.
Well, it accomplishes the same thing, Garth. I mean, it's, it puts the question out there. And at the public hearing, both sides have the ability to come in and voice their positions. And this commission will listen to that information. And then once we've, you know, gotten all the information and digested it, made our personal decisions on how we feel about that, at that point, then we'll make, take a vote, see which way it goes. But we'll do it with, you know, based on the input that we receive from the, the public hearing. We're not, you know. So I mean, it's just getting the question out there. You know, the verbiage may not be ideal, but it gets the question out there, allows us to proceed with the public hearing, provides a platform for, you know, the pros and cons forces to come in and, and give us, you know, their feedback. And so we can consider both sides of the story before we make a decision.
And make any additions or subtractions or leave it as is.
You know, this, this is proposed wording, we can change the wording even.
Yeah, at that point.
This is not, it's not locked in stone at this point.
This verbiage is because this is the board of county commissioners' verbiage. This is what, this is what they, as of right now, before the public hearing, before hearing your input, is their direction. So that's why it says what it was. Now you're going, now the public is going to debate that and then you're going to debate it. And then you're going to make a decision, send to them. And they can agree with it or disagree with it, which is, which disagreeing with it is, is quite a function. It takes, you know, majority to disagree and go forward with it. But you're still having to say, this is not saying that this board wants to ban it at this point. This is what the commissioners are saying. Now you're going to hear the public hearing and you're going to make a decision and send your recommendation to them. This is not this board saying that, hey, we're saying we want to ban solar right now. This is the direction from the board of county commissioners. This is their language.
Correct? Yeah, I think that's a really good point, a really good distinction, Garth. You know, this, this isn't staff writing this saying this is staff's opinion. This certainly isn't this board's, you know, writing this, they want to pro. This came down from the county commissioners saying that this is what we want you to have a public hearing. And we want to hear a public hearing on the prohibition of commercial solar. And then you're going to, like Donna said, listen to the public and then you're going to form your, your opinion and your recommendation based off of, of your review and your, your public input. And so there's no, by no means a requirement that you have to vote in favor of this if you don't believe that that's the direction we should go. This is just like he said, the, the direction of the county commissioners.
So if we have a public hearing and then we put this to a vote and we vote it down, then the county commission has to have a supermajority. And if they don't, then someone could apply for commercial solar.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. If you vote no and the commissioners.
Don't get a super.
Don't get a supermajority of four to one vote or whatever, then, then this text amendment doesn't go forward. And now we still have a, a moratorium in place.
Because we have no regulations.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have commercial regulations. And so then the debate's going to start all over. Do we put commercial regulations in place or, or what? Or what do we do?
There's still a long road ahead before this gets.
Oh, yeah.
Good conversation. Makes us think. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Take silence, no more discussion. Staff, you want to call a roll on this motion, please?
Short failure?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gerson?
Yes.
Text amendment draft is approved. Next item on the agenda, item C. Is discussion of possible action on setting a public hearing date for the series of text amendments that we discussed. What, now you and I were, we were busy earlier, Mark, but you might, you might explain to the rest of the board the publication dates, that kind of thing, what might be, what, what we might be looking at.
So like any text amendment, the one we just finished with the limited scale, takes publication in the newspaper, takes twenty day notification in that newspaper. It also requires notification of the township boards and also all the cities that are affected by our zoning. And so the, the cities in the eastern part of the county, so cities like Sylvia, Abbeyville, Platteville, those won't be getting a notice from me for this public hearing because of the fact that the zoning isn't out there and this won't apply to that area. Doesn't mean that they can't come to the public hearing or provide input. It just means that they're not getting a notice from me. So with that twenty day notice requirement, there's nothing that we send to the public. You know, now we'll, we'll put this on the website and it's going to be published in the Nennett Valley newspaper. So we're going to do our best to get it out there and we'll be working with our communication director to kind of get that out there on the social media platforms and everything. The Nennett Valley newspaper is the official county newspaper. It only publishes on Friday. And so, you know, the next time that I could possibly publish would be June, June twenty-eighth, next Friday. Okay, so you need twenty days out. So our next public hearing regularly scheduled is, is July the eighteenth. And that's cutting it really short. So I, I believe we do have one case for the board of zoning appeals. And so it's my belief that I think we should probably try and schedule a independent public hearing, separate from our regular meeting, just for that reason. And so to me, the earliest that you could do that would be after July eighteenth. So you'd be looking at the week of, of July twenty-second would be the earliest. That week, somewhere in there, you could do it. But you can do it anytime after that. You know, I mean, you're, you're not, you, you set whatever public hearing date you want. It just needs, I just need at least twenty days notification to do that. I don't know if you, if you want the next week after that, you know, July twenty-fifth, you can do something like that. You can go the last week in July, which would be July twenty-ninth to, to August second, somewhere in there, if that works for, for this board. But you would just need to discuss date and time, place. And I would assume we would, we would hold it in this building. So really, you know, the date and time that you want to conduct that public hearing.
Didn't we schedule a second date last time? We had a public hearing, thinking we might have overflow?
You know, we didn't schedule it, but I mean, we, we had some alternative times, yeah. But you know, if, if the public hearing goes longer than what you want to, you know, listen to, then what you would do is just continue that public hearing to another date and then you, we would reconvene at that time to hold or finish the public hearing portion.
The secondary date is mainly just a discussion as a placeholder for us. So if we do go long and want to continue, that we're all on the same page and we don't, we already have a date, date and time and place already, already, already discussed and handled.
For starters, I'll just throw out, I have conflicts on the twenty-fifth and sixth of July. Who that is in May.
And then is it correct to assume we would attempt to make a decision after the public hearing at our next meeting in August, whatever that is?
We could, we could make a decision that evening if, if we felt compelled. We wouldn't have to, but we could, we could say, we could continue, we could, if we'd heard all the public comment, we could close the public hearing and then we could move, we could continue our discussion to a next, another date and time and place.
You don't have to make a decision that night if you don't want to. If you want to review all the comments that you received and information that you received, then it's your prerogative to continue that meeting to another date and time. Like what we did with the minutes we just passed in November. You know, you saw how many times we continued that meeting.
This would be the hearing for both the prohibition and for the private.
Correct, correct. I think there's five separate text amendments, if I remember right, with, with everything involved.
I, I'm looking at, looking at my calendar. I'm good the week of, I'm not, I don't have yet, I believe I have, there's, there's some travel plans being made for that week of the twenty-second. So I would be, I would, I would not be available.
I'm not there the Thursday and Friday of that week either, so.
The week of the twenty-ninth, it's kind of.
You're not going to be there, I'm not coming.
You're not going to run it.
I don't want to be the grand master of this.
It's a great experience though.
How many years you got left?
That next week, which is a partial, it'd be the end of July and the first couple of days of August, I'd be open.
So we did, yeah, but you want to do a Thursday, we could do August one.
I'll be out of town July thirty-first to August twelfth.
Twelfth, that's a heck of a vacation. You're going to Acadia in Maine. Oh, that'll be nice, somewhere cool.
Somewhere cool.
Somewhere cool. Well, what does everybody think about doing it on the Monday, the twenty-ninth? Feel okay with that?
It works.
I think that works.
Okay.
What was the date you gave?
Monday, the twenty-ninth. I'm just, I'm on a separator conversation now, but how about the, the Thursday, the thirtieth? Would that be an also an okay alternate if we so desire to continue that meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so now we'll need to entertain a motion that will, that will include, that will state that July twenty-nine date and time. You know, we've, we've heard time and time again with our public hearings that four-thirty is too early. I'd like to accommodate some of the public on that end of it and probably start maybe at five or maybe even as late as five-thirty. I don't know, what's, what's the thoughts, what's the thoughts of this board?
Look at the working steps over here.
I know, I'm just, I'm throwing it out for conversation.
Whatever board wants.
I, I agree with you. I think five-thirty would be good. That way the people work and they have, want, that gives them time to get here if they want to attend it. Okay, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
So we're, we've got a date and time.
Oh, you just need a motion?
And then we need, and we're, we're assuming this, we're going to meet right here. So we need a date, time and place. That's what we need in the motion.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for a series of text amendments to create Article fifteen dash one oh five, parentheses, five eight A, adding clarifying, clarifying the solar energy system limited scale commercial as required and conditional use permit, amending Article fifteen dash one oh nine, one and two, accessory uses allowed to create private. Article 15 dash 109, 1 and 2, accessory uses allowed to create private ground mounted solar energy system regulations and create Article 15 dash 1118 to prohibit commercial solar systems in the zoned area of the county. Said public hearing will be held on Ju, Ju, July 29th at 5:30 PM in the Public Works Building. And if needed, it will be continued on July 30th at same time and place. That give you what you need?
Yes. Date, time and place.
Okay, been moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. You wanna voice vote on this or you just need consensus?
Do a roll.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Short fire?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Gertson?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing date set, publish. Staff, do you have any other business to be brought before the board?
I have one item, Mr. Chair, right quick. It has to do with planning commission terms, so this is actually the, the time of the year, believe it or not, that we need to start thinking about renewals or taking applications for potentially new members. And so the following people are, are up for renewal, and that's gonna be Harley, Allen and Garth. Harley's ending his second three-year term, and Allen and Garth ending their first three-year term. And so per county commissioner policy, you would need to make application to be reappointed to the board, and I can send you that link if you want. And what it is, I believe it's a 90-day period that we need to have that published and on the website and take other applications. And so if you're interested in renewing your, your appointment to this board, then you just need to fill out that application and send it to me, and then sometime later this fall, it'll go before the county commissioners for, for their consideration, so. But I can forward you through the, the link to, to where that is.
Or I can.
And a copy, you know, if, if you need it that way.
You don't have it printed, just give them.
It's not on the website, yeah, 'cause we're not, we're not accepting appointments, yeah. I, I did have it, but it was for the wrong board, so I, I was prepared. I was gonna do that, but yeah, it wasn't out there.
Tell them all, and just give them a place to sign.
Yeah. So.
Just tell them we're done.
Through you for renewal, nobody's going off, nobody's termed out yet, but if you'd like to come back to this board, then we need, actually need an application from you.
I'm sitting here asking myself, did I do that three years ago?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yeah, it was probably a paper, a paper copy.
Probably, I think it was a paper copy.
You just need to create enough controversy between now and the end of the year that the county commissioner won't appoint you.
Just throw the water.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does this board have any other business need to be brought forward? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell them.
Been moved to adjourn, do I hear a second?
I will.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.